I think you were in a year there, right?
Good morning. I want to call the June 25th, 2012, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. At this time, if you would stand with us, Commissioner Mike Vaught will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together to conduct the county business. We ask that you help us do it in a wise way that is pleasing to you, and help us to keep this county moving forward. We ask that you be with its leaders, and I ask a special prayer for the Jordan family today. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaught. Mike mentioned the Jordan family, and Mike, would you just give us a little brief update as to what's going on there?
Will's father, Mr. Ed, longtime school board member, farmer, I think a lot of you probably know him or know of him, is in really bad shape, probably won't leave the hospital. So, ask your prayers to be with Will and Buddy and Ms. Jane.
Is he out here?
He is out here.
Dale, would you call the roll, please?
Rhonda Allen?
Here.
Richie Bowlen?
Here.
Veronica Buchanan?
Here.
Will Jordan? Mike Kush?
Present.
Craig Lynch?
Here.
Pettis Reed?
Here.
Steve Sandlin?
Here.
Mike Vaught?
Here.
Vincent Windrow? Jeff Phillips?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of our May 29th meetings. Call on our Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity to look over the minutes, and I make a motion we approve those.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Items withdrawn or deferred?
Nothing withdrawn or deferred, Mr. Chairman.
Item number six, bond plat extensions. A Harvest Woods, Section 1, Phase 1, bond extension for one year.
Mr. Chairman, both of these two come due in July, and they've asked for an extension for a year due to the economic situation, and they're unable to sell as many homes as they thought they would. We recommend approval for those, for both of them.
You go ahead and mention these. Cascade Falls, Section 1 and 2, bond extension for one year. We'll take them both as one motion.
Dale, have these been up before us, before on extension?
Yes, sir, they have.
They have? One time?
One time.
And what's their, both of them's, how far along are they in?
Well, Cascade Falls, in talking to him, he is almost ready to pave his roads. And I say that with a caveat, because almost could be, you know, three sales, which may, I don't know the exact number, could take him a little bit. He hopes to do it this fall, but I suggest to him to go ahead and ask for a year because of the situation. And Harvest Woods, they'll, it'll probably take at least a full year for them to, for their work to be done.
But we're not in any jeopardy, like they're running out or something like that?
No, both of these actually have auto-renewable bonds on them, but we have to go through this process every year. In other words, the bond is renewed automatically, excuse me, unless within 30 days, we get writing that, you know, it's canceled. So, but we have to go through the process.
Mr. Chairman, I solely understand the situation. Make a motion, we approve both these, if you don't mind.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you. Staff reports.
We have nothing further, unless someone from the Planning Commission does. We would just, in light of any, if there's no other business, we just recommend adjourning the regular portion of the meeting, and we'll go right into our work session.
Other business opportunities?
I was just going to ask, do we have a meeting in two weeks? Do we have business on agenda in two weeks?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Mentioned that meeting in two weeks.
July 9th, I believe is the date.
It is. July, Monday, July 9th at 6:00 PM. It's a Monday evening meeting. Any other business? Move to adjourn? Oh, adjourn. Actually, we're not going to take any time.
No, I don't think we're really need to.
Right into our work session.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll just go ahead and jump right into the couple issues that we'd like to discuss today regarding the zoning ordinance draft. At the last Planning Commission meeting, you'll recall, we did hand out a few items for your consideration. I know we didn't have much discussion on it. Of course, we had a pretty lengthy agenda at the last meeting, and I think commissioners at the time really just wanted to kind of take the matter under advisement, and then come and talk a little more thoroughly about the matters at this meeting. So, there were really two issues that we wanted to discuss. One of them had to do with the open space options for plan developments, and the other had to do with distance requirements for rock quarries. I think the, if there's no objections with the commission, we'll go ahead and work on the PUD, open space options first, and then kind of see where that goes with that discussion. You'll recall that we provided a list of options regarding open space requirements, probably about three or four months ago at this point. In summary, there were five different options. One of them was keep the existing language in the plan development section, which is what's in our current code that we moved over to the draft, of 20% open space with at least half of that being usable open space. The second option was keep the 20% open space requirement, but eliminate the requirement for any usable open space, basically allowing any kind of a combination between what would just be termed usable open space and just plain open space. Basically, halve the amount of open space that's required, go from 20% to 10%. Eliminate the percentage requirement for open space entirely, and just review each PUD application on its own merits, and then develop a sliding scale possibly for the determination of how much open space is required. The decision at that time was just to keep the existing language, the 20%, with at least half being usable open space. But upon further discussion at the May meetings, it appeared that the consensus from the Planning Commission was that we felt that the 20% requirement was probably too high, so we started looking at some possible alternatives to that. There was also some discussion about using the step field areas as open space, if a more decorative fence is used. After we consulted with Consolidated Utility District, from what the information they've provided to us, their state permit requires that they put up at least a four-foot woven wire or chain-link fence surrounding all step areas. So, while a developer would be allowed to install a more decorative fence, they would still have to put the chain-link fence out there as well. So, I don't know if that'd really be an option that the commission would want to explore or not.
Didn't you also say that CUD didn't want the liability of people being on that property?
That's part of it, yes, ma'am. Yeah. So, after thinking about this among staff a little bit, basically what we came up with is similar to just not having a open space requirement, but we kind of changed it up just a little bit on the back of that piece of paper that's on your table. And this is just another option, but this is something that you might want to think about using. Open space, this is how we would change this particular section. Of course, open space is something that we do want to encourage with plan developments. You know, I still believe that there is a certain trade-off involved whenever you have a developer who's asking for more than what they would normally be entitled to under traditional zoning classifications. They're going for a plan development, they may have the ability to have mixture of uses, more density, those kind of things. So, I do think it's important to stress that we would expect some sort of provision of open space in return for that. So, with that in mind, kind of the wording we used was open space is an important feature in PUDs, and is expected that open space will be provided in each application. In all PUDs, at least 50% of any open space provided must be usable open space as defined in the regulations. And then, of course, we'd still keep the provision in about completely non-residential. PUDs would be exempt from that requirement. Essentially, what this would do would allow the Planning Commission to kind of review each plan development by its own merits. You know, there was a lot of discussion at the last couple meetings regarding, you know, the size of a plan development, you know, the larger the development, the more open space it's required, and that that might be a little, 20% especially, might be a little much, depending on the size of the development. But this would allow you to have a little more leeway in that, but at the same time, requiring that the development have at least 50% of whatever they provide being usable open space. So, regardless of the size of the development, if they're going to put 10 acres, or they're going to put 100 as open space, half of it's going to have to be the usable open space as defined in the regulations. So, kind of a hybrid of a couple of them, if you will, but that's a recommendation that we felt comfortable passing along to you for discussion. So, again, if you would like to allow the step soil areas to be counted as open space, a certain percentage, then those last couple items on the back of that page would show you the amendments that would need to be made. You'd need to come up with a percentage of what you'd want to count, and then, you know, we could amend that at that point. But that's kind of the direction that we're thinking is reasonable, so I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Doug, if we use a flexible scale like this, and this month someone comes in and we say, "That's good," say, "It gives us two acres," or whatever, and everybody knows we're using flexible. Next month, the guy comes in, he gives us five acres, and that's great, we take it. The next month, that guy comes in, he's only going to give us two acres again. And what I'm saying is, I don't want him to be able to compare to one that's happened before. By us using flexible, there's no comparison.
Right.
You can't come in with that argument. You did it for him, you did it for him. Does that get that out the window?
I think, I think it would. I mean, quite frankly, most of the PUDs that we've looked at prior to the regulations that we're currently under were handled that way. One development may have come in with, you know, like you said, five, 10 acres, next one came in with 50 or 75. A lot of it's going to depend on the product that they're wanting to sell, you know, the type of development that they're really, the people are trying to push for, you know, the type of development they're really trying to push for. But I think there's an understanding as well that each development is different, you know.
Wouldn't have a legal precedent.
I don't, I mean.
If we're using a flexible.
I wouldn't think so. Mr. McCrary is here, you may want to, you know, touch base, you know, ask that question of him. I personally don't think there is one, just because I think there are other factors involved in determining what's appropriate for each plan development. Like I said, you may have steep slopes on one, or less usable area because of floodplain on another, whereas, you know, a separate one may not have those kind of constraints. So, I think, I don't necessarily think you're creating any kind of a precedent, no, to answer your question.
Josh?
I can address that. Two things. First of all, with the PUD, it is a rezoning. So, under rezonings as compared to some of the other things that you deal with, site plans and so forth, you do have a bit more flexibility. So, it doesn't concern me as much that you may have somewhat of a flexible standard on a PUD. But I think the most critical thing would be if there are not criteria that are easily identified in the resolution, then when you decide how much open space you're going to allow for a particular applicant, state that on the record. And that way, to the extent the next applicant is different in some way, and we get into this issue of, was there some kind of precedent from a previous applicant, we can look back and you can see exactly why you decided what you decided, and that makes it much easier to discern, is this one similar or dissimilar from the prior one. So, I think you're back to it being very imperative that you, when you get into flexibility, that you're stating your reasons on the record. Beyond that, I don't know of any per se prohibition of having a somewhat flexible standard, as long as we're diligent about that. Does that answer your question?
Thanks, Josh. Could that be, could that be worded in such a way that you don't overlook it?
Probably, yes, sir.
Possibly be. Would that be, would that make noise?
You don't want to drop the ball, something like that.
I mean, I'm sure we could find a way to do that without much problem.
Doug, I know part of what we were talking about originally with even having, even making an exchange for open space, was the whole idea was that there was going to be some incentive for them, if they could increase their density, to allow for more open space. Have we kept that language?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
The opening section?
It is, under the purposes section, yes, ma'am.
And then the only other piece of feedback I have on this is, I'm inclined to not include step systems. I mean, you could, somebody could probably convince me otherwise, but as we went through all this, our initial idea behind this was to either keep pristine, undisturbed land, or land that the new residents could utilize. And they can't utilize step, and step isn't undisturbed. I mean, it's there for a purpose. So, my gut tells me it shouldn't be included in open space, but I'm happy to listen to an argument to the contrary.
Quite frankly, I think if this is the direction we decide to go, I don't, I think this really becomes more of a non-issue anyway. You know, when we had a percentage, especially the 20%, you know, that was really when we received a lot of the concerns where people were wanting to possibly use, I mean, even when we were originally coming up with the regulations, you probably recall, there was some discussion at the Planning Commission level about using step system, step field areas, anyway, for open space. But with, if this is the direction you want to go, I don't think that really comes into play anymore, personally.
Are we just pretty much set against putting just a 10% or, instead of leaving that? I'm real nervous about flexibility, you know, just for, you know, for history. I guess you might say.
Well, yeah.
If we give them 10%, you know, a PUD, something that, you know, you don't, we're not making them do, it's a choice. As far as the step system, we're already giving them credit on it, because you take, if you got 100 acre parcel, and 10 acres of it set as step, then we take that part out when you're looking for open space anyway, the way I understand it.
Right.
And I'm just a whole lot more comfortable with a set of rules that we, you know, that's easy to follow than, instead of leaving the door open, so.
And I guess a lot of it's going to depend on what direction you really want to go in. I mean, if you don't go this route that we're proposing today, then, again, the consensus that we agreed, at least that we got out of the last meeting, we really talked about this, was that 20% was too high. So, at that point, we, staff, we said, "Well, just go down to 10% then." And then that's 10%. Then 5% would have to be, well, the overall of the development, 5% would have to be the usable open space, half of whatever is provided. But then there was a lot of discussion back and forth about, well, you know, 10%, if you have 500 acres, it's 50 acres, it's a lot of open space, and whatnot. So, that's why we kind of came up with the language we did. I mean, ultimately, it's going to be up to you as the commission as to which direction you want to go. We're comfortable with either what we're proposing today, or just taking it from 20 to 10%. Whatever you'd be more comfortable with.
Is there, is there a way to base the percentage on the number of units? I mean, I'm just talking out loud, I haven't really thought this through, but.
You mean if you went for.
If you developed.
If you went for smaller density, you would be required to have a little more open space, I think. Is that what you're speaking of?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to put in my head is, if you had a small PUD, and say there's 20 freestanding buildings, or units, then your percentage is this, as opposed to if you had the mega site where there's 200 freestanding units, then I'm just wondering if there's a way to put a percentage based on a number of.
Graduated percentage based on the size of the development.
I mean, I understand the percentage thing, and that creates a little, a bit of a problem. But like we did in previous meetings, if you have that monster site, and made them do 10%, that's a whole lot of acres that really may be too many to have. So, on the big end, it's easy to understand. On the smaller PUDs, it's where it gets a little, little tricky.
Well, we talked about, or just at least kicked around the idea of a sliding scale, which is sort of what you're talking about.
Right.
And it seems like we sort of found problems with it, too.
Yeah, well.
It's hard to do.
Yeah, it, I mean, the concern, I mean, first of all, there's just not a whole lot of examples for us to look at. I mean, we've tried looking for those, and there's just, there's really not many. One we did find really dealt more with the base zoning of the property than anything else. I didn't really think it fit into what we were trying to do. I also think that sometimes with sliding scales, those can become cumbersome, and how do you define where the break points are? You know, you don't want to be arbitrary in that, but in a sense, it's almost, to a certain extent, almost is arbitrary, when you're, even when you're trying to figure out where the break points are. So, I mean, that's certainly something that can be, can be looked at, but.
Let's do, let's just pick an example, then. Let's say we did 10% with 5 and 5 usable non. So, if you had, what would be a typical PUD site acre-wise?
Well, some of the more recent ones that we've looked at, we had one that was a little over 200, about 218. We had one that was about 141. We had one that was 471. And then we had, well, this one never was brought through the Planning Commission, but we had one that was almost, it was over 630.
So, the smallest one was like 140 acres?
Yes, and it had 13% open space. The one that had 218 acres had 37%. The one that had 471 had 12%. And then the one that was 631 proposed 49%.
And those percentages are open, are usable space, or just total?
Well, these were all submitted really before the development came around.
Right, but the percentages.
Those regs came around, so.
The percentages you talked about were, were?
I believe of the gross property, yeah.
So, if we set it at 10%, that's the, if we said 10% is the minimum, and you can give more, and they know that they can give more, and maybe get the density exchange for that, every one of those would have at least satisfied our minimum.
Yes.
And then, and, you know, and I guess if somebody came in with a really nice development, and they only had 8%, I'd still like to be able to, as a group, you know, decide whether that 8 is acceptable based on, I mean, I know, and that's where it starts to get.
Right, and, you know, I don't think you can have it both ways at that point. I don't think you can say, "We want at least 10%", but if you come in and we feel you meet the intent of the regulations, we'll let you go down to 7, 8%. You know, I think that can start getting more arbitrary at that point. So, I mean, if that's really what you want, I would just say, "Don't require any kind of a, of a minimum."
All right, well, and again, since we haven't had that many PUDs come before us, if we set, if we agreed on 10%, and two years from now, after we got some developments in and decided 10 was still, needed some work, we could perhaps amend that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, this would just, at that point, it would just be like making any kind of textual amendment to the zoning ordinance, like you do today. I mean, you wouldn't even have to wait two years. I mean, if you decided two months after the fact that, "No, we really should have done that to begin with, let's go ahead and change it," you could do that.
So, if, if they had 100 acres, and they had 20% needed for step, then we're still talking about 80%.
Eighty acres, right.
And of that, if we agree that 10% would be our minimum limit, then eight acres would have to be, and four of which is usable, four of which is nonusable.
Right.
Okay. I'm happy with that. And if I'm, if you need a, if you need a motion, I'm happy to give one.
And just to be clear, though, to make changes to the zoning, it goes through full commission, it's not just this body?
That's correct. That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, is that a motion?
Yes, hold on. I'm under advisement.
Okay, yeah. Work session in progress.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, basically, you're just taking the first bullet point of this sheet and scratching out the 20, making it 10?
Basically, yes. I mean, really. I'm sorry.
The third bullet is the same.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is. I mean, as far as changing the actual document itself, it's just going to be a matter of changing 20 to 10, really. It's, it's.
Well, motion-wise, I'm going to make a motion that we amend the regulation to show that we require a minimum of 10% of the, let me see, hold on.
Redoes our bullet.
Okay.
We know what you mean.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure we also clearly understand that you take the step out, and then what's left is the percentage.
Right, and that's, right, and that's currently how it's written, so, and then we'll make that change.
That was one of my better ones, actually.
That's what the 5% usable, too.
Five, yeah. 10 minimum, and 5 and 5.
Yeah, basically, the only change we'll be making in the document is changing 20 to 10. I mean, everything else should take care of itself, but we understand your intent, so we'll make sure that that gets done.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Pretty much all satisfied. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
And just to clarify, for anybody who may be watching the meeting at home or reading in the paper, basically, all we have done is approved a change in the document. This is not approving the actual document in and of itself. You know, we're just working through the issues that are still outstanding. Just wanted to throw that out there, make sure everybody understood what we were doing.
Change our draft.
Right, exactly. All right, very good. One down, one to go. The other issue that was discussed, and has been discussed at quite some length, was the distance for rock quarries to residential property, schools, those kind of things. You'll recall that the staff, we did a report back, I guess that was last month, May 14th meeting, kind of went through several different localities and how they handle rock quarry regulations. As you, as you know, our current regulations, as we have them on the books, and how we have them in the draft right now, is that there's no excavation quarry wall or storage area to be located within one mile from a school, or 1,500 feet from streets, community assemblies, which would be churches, or any type, similar type uses like that, or residentially zoned property. The buffering would be based on the adjacent, zoning of the adjacent property, and that's just a quick overview of our existing regulations. There was some discussion after looking at what some of the other localities do as far as distance requirements, and we've looked into that a little bit. And the last, kind of where we left it off at was a proposal by staff to look at the possibility of changing the 1,500 feet to 1,000 feet, and then put in their community assembly activities, community education activities, which would be schools, or any residentially zoned property. And then they would also have to be 200 feet from any other property line that may not be zoned for residential purposes. And you'll recall, we had several maps in there that we had shown. This, what we were proposing was the most similar to Williamson County's regulations, which would allow, if you remember our example track that we used, the current county regulations would allow about 57 and a half acres, where the proposed would allow a little bit over 200 for actual quarrying area. Again, depending on the, the surrounding zoning of the property, that would vary somewhat. And, you know, as you recall, we made it clear that we didn't want this to be a situation where we, where people thought that it's more of a percentage, you know, "If we change this, then we're going to be increasing the amount of vary by X percent," because it really depends on the shape of the property, the surrounding zoning, and those kind of things. So, that's kind of where we left it. There was also some discussion about possibly including healthcare facilities in with the 1,000 feet, not just schools and education, I'm sorry, community assembly activities, community education activities, but also healthcare facilities, like hospitals, those kind of things. And also some discussion about including scales in the exception as far as the structures having to be at least 200 feet from property lines. Right now, the current reg reads, with the exception of parking, fencing, and offices, and there was some discussion about including scales in there as well, since really all they're doing is driving up to the scales and then, and then leaving, and we were fine with that. But that's kind of a quick overview of the regulations. Now, the large map you've got on your table just kind of shows you one of the quarries in Rutherford County, and some of the distances to surrounding properties. You'll see even in the quarry areas, at some places, it's as close to about, as about 150 feet or so. You'll see that some of the work areas, you can see to the Basket Brook subdivision, which is actually a city subdivision across, not wholesale, but Twin Oak Drive, is about, I'd say it's roughly about half a mile, not quite a half a mile. Couple of distance requirements there to schools. You'll see that both of those are within a, both schools, Oakland High and, well, I guess it's just Oakland High School, are both with, are within a mile of the property, as well as the Daniel McKee Alternative School, which is on Halls Hill Pike. And also, you'll see that we provided a smaller 8 and 1/2 by 11. This kind of gives you a mile radius of the different schools in the area, and how they relate to that one quarry. So, that's just kind of a quick overview. I know there was a lot of discussion on this, and no real consensus at that point last time we discussed this, but there was some discussion that 1,500 feet may be too high. Mr. Kush, I know you had spoken with some of your geotechnical colleagues, and you might want to, and I got your email, but you may want to, you know, elaborate on that just a little bit as far as what they told you.
Do you have the, do you have a copy of the email?
Uh, no, I can print one, I don't have it with me.
You have it in your head?
Basically.
I did, I did reach out to a few of my geotechnical engineer friends, and all with mixed reviews, but really, their suggestion, I have been in the mood to maybe shrink some of those distances, particularly school, one mile. But they reminded me that every site's different, and there's really no way to tell the distance of vibration and the distance of shock until you're just really out there doing it. But their recommendations were some pretty long distances. And, and then you have to decide, well, okay, when they set off the boom at 3 o'clock, if the antique plate shakes on the wall, is that acceptable, or, you know, does it really disturb stuff? So, I, the more I ask questions, the more different answers I got about what would be an acceptable difference. So, my opinion really changed. I'm more, my, right now, my mood is more of a conservative approach on distances, as opposed to maybe shrinking. But I think the mile of the school's too far, but as far as residents and offices around there, I, we'll debate that. I'm not, I'm not in the mood to have something a couple I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in the mood to have something a couple hundred feet away from the edge of a quarry. And if you remember the email better than...
Well, I, I mean, really is, I, I think you've summed it up as I recalled it. You know, there were, there was no real answer as far as that goes. And you can tell by the regulations we, that we reviewed, even the ones in Tennessee.
They're all over.
They're all over the map. And, you know, kind of along those lines, you know, and I just those out there for discussion, you know, maybe if, if the planning commissioner would like, keep the fifteen hundred foot, but like you said, you still, you think maybe it's too far for a school, just lump everything into the fifteen hundred foot, schools, hospitals, community, uh, community assembly type facilities, just leave it all fifteen hundred. Now, understand that the way the current regulation is written, it's fifteen hundred foot from those item, from those type of structures and also residentially zoned property. You know, as far as commercially zoned or industrially zoned, we're still looking at whatever the setbacks are. So, if you wanted to keep the two hundred foot from any other property line in there just for a little more buffer area, I don't think that's inappropriate, but...
About the only thing, Doug, that I didn't really understand when we really got into it and looked at it and, and prior cases also, is the difference within that one mile from the, from the school and then you've got fifteen hundred feet from residential. To me, it's somewhat, I understand, okay, you got a school here, but then again, you got a residential home here that's, okay, what, what is more important? You know, I mean, they're both really important, you know?
It could have multiple residential homes at that same business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That would entail more people than maybe a school. I, I don't know the thought process on that, but I wouldn't, no pun intended, but we're kinda messing with dynamite here. And, and, and when we, you know, I got involved in the one in my area as well as looking at, looking at the regulations and stuff, it's, it's nothing just come out of the air. You know, I'm talking to people that, that own and run quarries, talking to engineers as well. And really, when you're talking about dynamite and you're talking about setting off a charge, it, it, it's, a lot of factors go into it. I mean, from your cloud, how, how, how the, or low the clouds are that day when they blast for a shock wave to, you know, how deep you are at that point and what type of rock you're in. Your, your valley basin type deal compared to a flat to, I mean, just a lot of stuff goes in there, which made me, Mike, say, "Leave it alone."
Yeah.
You know, and, and I'm proud we really have looked at this in, in detail. But, you know, from engineers and, and from, from people that's got documentation and this and that and stuff about blasting in general, you know, rocks that, that sell even further than fifteen hundred feet, but in realistic, how, how much does that go on? You know, it, it's more of into a three hundred to five hundred range is, is a good, you know, from rocks being thrown, you know? But then you're talking about the, the shock itself and the shock wave or whatever and what damage it does. You know, you're talking about a whole new ball of wax there. So, I, I, I'd really just wanna keep it fifteen hundred feet. And if we need to do something different there from the school, you know, the mile type thing, I don't really understand that. If somebody can explain that to me, I mean, I'll stick with the mile on that, but I just didn't relate it to, you've got a, you could have some really dense subdivisions, like you said, right next to the quarry and meet that fifteen hundred feet and then, but, but the school has to be a mile.
Yeah, and some, and...
I think we're treating peo, treating structures differently there. And, and your home structure is not even more important than the school structure.
Right, I understand.
You know, if we're talking about that or we're talking about people in danger or whatever, I mean, I think it's...
I, I think, I think when you're talking about the school, they're not talking about the structure or they're talking about the danger from the blast.
Right.
But I think you're more dealing with the fact of the vibration of that occurring and the disturbance to the children. I don't know if you've ever dealt with, with the children within a classroom, but it doesn't take much to change the atmosphere within a classroom. A noise of any kind causes you to lose total concentration in what they're doing. And if it's an elementary school or whatever, if there's a blast that you're fairly close, it shakes the entire classroom, you've lost that classroom as far as their attention and things of that type. And that's the concern, I think, the mile is. Maybe the mile has a less vibration situation as far as those children are concerned. And I think that's what the mile is based upon there. It has nothing to do with, with what we're talking about as far as...
You oughta get my voicemail after they set a charge in the one in my area. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a daily deal. Well, I'm just saying, whenever they blast, it doesn't matter. I'm gonna get calls.
Doug, I got a question. When they do blast, is the, the blasting area fifteen hundred feet? Or is it the, just the structure fifteen hundred feet from the resident?
The way that the regulation is worded and, at least currently worded, would be the actual area they're blasting in.
Okay.
The, the area they're quarrying would be the area that'd be fifteen hundred feet. So, some of these other, like, parking areas or whatever, those could be closer than that. But the actual quarrying, quarry wall, storage areas, anything like that, where they're actually doing the digging would have to be fifteen hundred feet.
So, the blasting area that they're blasting at has to be exactly one mile from a school, right? They can't...
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Well, it, it goes off the, the footprint of the actual quarrying area. So, whatever's approved for that footprint, it's the outside of that footprint to, that's your fifteen hundred feet.
Right, and that's how we've, yeah, and that's how we've got it worded at this point, is no...
So, they can be anywhere on this property blasting within that footprint, is that...
No, you've got a, you've got an approved footprint for blasting, for the, the actual quarrying operation, I think is the way it's worded.
Yeah.
And so, you might have a piece out here that's an entrance or something, that it's, it's not affected. It's going from inside this area, and looking at this map here, I don't know where, it doesn't really show the, the actual footprint of the quarry.
Well, you kinda, yeah, it's, it...
You don't know how much further it goes. So, it's not directly to the edge of the cliff, so to speak. It may be another fifty feet, a hundred feet, two hundred feet or whatever, back north, south, east, or west or something, so you'd have to look at that.
Well, yeah, and the way we've worded it at this point, and actually, it might actually be from the wall. The way we worded at this point was, is no excavation quarry wall or storage area shall be located within one mile from a school or fifteen hundred feet from, you know, whatever. So, you know, a, a lot of it depends on how you word it. I mean, if you word it to the quarry wall, then the actual area, it doesn't matter, they could be blasting, you could have your wall, they could be blasting three hundred feet from it, they're measuring from the wall, not, not exactly where it blasts. So, it just, again, a lot of it depends on how it's worded.
Yeah.
So, but the way we've currently worded it, it would be from the wall or any storage area. Now, something else I think is important to keep in mind, and this is something that I don't think is necessarily addressed, but when we're talking fifteen hundred foot or a mile or whatever distance we end up using, are we talking to property line or are we talking to actual structure?
Well, that was my next question.
Okay. I think the way that we've looked at it traditionally has been to the property line, measuring to the property line. Now, that doesn't mean we have to keep doing it that way, but I think that's something that we need to clarify before we leave today.
Are you talking about property line from both the school and the quarry?
Well, I think from the quarry, based on the way it's worded, I mean, it's from the quarry wall excavation or storage area.
The property line of the school.
Of the school, right. Or to whatever facility it is you're talking about.
Can I ask Josh a question on that? Josh, I don't know if, if you're able to answer this, that'd be great, but could, could we, since we're redoing this, could we put that fifteen hundred feet and make it more clear? I guess, because that's, that's a moving target on storage area and, and blasting wall and stuff. If we move it to a, a property line, property line's not gonna change unless they buy more property and then it, then it would, but I'm just talking about property line and doing this a blanket. It might be more clear to the owners, more clear to the, the residents surrounding it. I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can respond to that. If it answers, yeah, you can do it. However you choose to define it at this point. And I think Doug's bringing up a good point that all of you are having the conversation on, and that is, at this, when we get into defining this, the words are going, going to matter.
Yes.
And so, where we're measuring from is going to be important. And when we, even, I'm sitting here thinking, even when we say the lot line, if you're using the lot line from the quarry, for example, now, I know we've been talking about the quarry side or the quarry wall, but suppose you use the lot line of the quarry, then if the quarry acquires additional property, that would move your lot line. And that, that's all gonna be impacted by this. So, you're gonna have to be pretty thoughtful, I think, about how you define your measurements all the way around, both on the quarry side and on the other side.
Well, and, and like I'm saying, this, you know, even looking at this one right here, I mean, this site right here started with an initial blast. Right? Whether it's in the middle or where, wherever the heavy rock is. And, and it's grown and it's expanded and it's expanded. So, really, that has, that has shifted. You know, if we're truly looking at the way it's written, I'm just thinking in a more, where it's not in a, a chase the whole time, from years down the road, here's your property line. There it is. I mean, you, you go off the property line.
Yeah, my, my only suggestion there would be, 'cause you're, you're getting into policy here and that's not, that's for you, not me, but I do think that as a practical matter, even if you use property line, we might wanna say the property line on the application, tie it to some, to something specific, because even there, the property line has the potential of moving over time. If there's an amended site plan.
True.
Or they acquire different, uh, different property. So, even where we use property line, we mean property line at a particular moment in time. And so, if you can nail that down, I think that'll be easier in terms of not having a moving target.
So, if you said the property, say we had an application and the property line of the original plat.
As approved, right.
As approved, then that would cover it.
At least it would give you an identifiable piece of paper and you're, this was the property line at that time.
Then it can move if they bought more land later on.
Right.
And needed to shift the operation, however, then we could adjust it.
Well, they would have to come in, they'd have a separate site plan. You'd be able to re-measure, you'd have a new line.
Yeah.
And they would still have to be within whatever line, you know, measurement you've created, but you're gonna be measuring from the new line at that point. So, we would allow you to reevaluate it if they came back in with a new site plan or something.
You know, that, that's what we're trying to do in this whole plan all across the board, you know, is to make it more understandable and more across the board for us that's not gonna be here one day or this planning, you know, group here, you know? One day, we're not gonna be here and we're not gonna know what, what did they mean? Okay, we got it in black and white here, it says property line. And for this plat that's been approved, whatever.
Right.
And, and, well, it's pretty simple, it should be.
Yeah, and that, one other thought I had, I think you said something about storage bins.
Storage areas.
Yeah, now, see, that to me could be a little bit confusing too, 'cause that could move. If it's a, if it's a building or structure that has got to have a building permit of some type associated with it, then you'd know, because they have to identify the location before they get the building permit. But if it's some location on the site that they don't have to have a permit for, then they could always be adjusting that, so your, your measurement would be moving. So, that could be complicated if you tie it to something like that.
Well, they, what this is referring to is storing rock.
Right, no, I understand.
So, it's not under a shelter. It's, it's just a storage area for different size.
Does it say that, though?
Rock.
It, it doesn't, it, it does say storage area, it doesn't come right out and say.
There's another ambiguity.
Yeah.
Do we mean storage of equipment or rock or uniforms? What does that mean?
Josh, while you're, while you're still up there, Petis made a, a point about schools. You know, we've had that conversation for months about treating things differently and I think Richie brought up something a minute ago that related to sliding scales on, on another issue.
Right.
We're, we're treating folks differently right now, if we stay with the mile. You know, there are, there are residences that may have, may be a daycare center or other types of things and you've got people who work third shift and are sleeping during the daytime and you've got kids that are home during the summertime and, and all of those types of things is...
Right.
Is, is that an issue that, what do you think?
Well, I think you'll get complaints no matter what you do, is what I think. But I think that you'll, you're gonna have to make, I guess your real question to me is, do I think it's a problem to, to draw distinctions where there are differences? Or, or arguably not differences? Sometimes it, it is problematic, but I do think, to the extent that you are engaging in policymaking, which you are now, you're creating a new zoning ordinance, which you are, and you are making distinctions rationally between certain uses, I think that you can do that. So, I don't think you wanna make arbitrary distinctions, but I think that making a distinction between a school and another use is a rational distinction and you've already, you know, laid out some of your reasons for that on the record here this morning. And I think that's the way you do it. Now, some of the distinctions may get harder to make, but I do think that in your policymaking role, you can try to design a policy that is going to be both workable and meets whatever sorts of concerns that you may have for various types of uses. It's gonna be hard to treat everybody differently. But I think you do have some room there to treat different uses differently, to the extent they really are different. Once it's in the policy, though, then, of course, you'll be called upon to treat every applicant that fits within a certain category the same. That's where you get into problems. So, if we say the schools are a mile and somebody comes in with a big daycare facility, we can't suddenly decide, "Oh, that should have been a mile," because it's more like a school than it is a daycare. Once we get your policy in place, you're gonna be stuck with it. So, I think you're right to be thoughtful about all of these distances.
Could I ask, Josh, one more question? When I was over the landfill, the landfill operation had a site plan. This is a state thing and I wanna see how it applies here. Were we designated for, we were put in the trash, we had a burn area and it was all approved by the state. We had an individual, a homeowner, who came in and built a house across the river. And the state deal was you could not have a burn area from a landfill within a mile of a residence. Well, when he built that house, that brought our burn area, which had already been approved by the state, it was like three quarters of a mile. So, we had to move to burn area and we were very, we barely made place to put it. But my question is, this site plan was approved with the operation, like, we're gonna approve it, say we get an application in for a rock quarry and they've got a, an area, as Steve says, it's already designated, this is where we're gonna quarry. And you get an individual who then builds their house within fifteen hundred feet of your property line. Does that negate what we've proved as their operating area? As it, as the state said it did when that individual built that house?
I, I don't think it does in the normal sense of things. That sounds like an unusual anomaly in the whole scenario, but, but it does get back to where, what you're measuring to, because using the residence as the example, if you're measuring to the property line, then the person really could never build their house within the fifteen hundred feet, because anywhere on their property is going to be outside of fifteen hundred feet, using that as the example. You could get into an issue, I guess, with some other building, though. I mean, I guess I'm thinking about a school. What if there were a rock quarry and the county wanted to put a school within a mile? Then you're, you're dealing with the issue in reverse and I think it would be incumbent upon the county at that point in locating property to decide, you know, to locate properties that are outside of one mile from an existing quarry at that point. 'Cause obviously, you can't, you can't go backwards and say, "Well, we're gonna put the school within a mile of the quarry, so shut your quarry down." That's not going to happen. So, these other uses, if we're tying it to buildings that are for a specific use, you know, it, it could matter and it's gonna need to be watched on the building permit side that these buildings are not within the requisite distance.
Josh, could you, could you say, "Okay, the quarry got approved and the quarry's there. The fifteen hundred square, or the fifteen hundred feet distance we put in place really is a protection measure and if somebody wants to come build within that, they're waiving that protection. That's their choice to waive that protection." Could, I mean, can you treat it that way? So, could they build their house within the fifteen hundred square feet? Not square feet, but the fifteen hundred feet because they chose to with full knowledge that they're waiving that protection?
If you, I, I think in theory, if you designed the regulation to allow that, yes. I mean, a person could in essence waive that.
Buffer.
That buffer, but...
And so, could the school, if the school decided to come within...
If they, if the, if the quarry's existing and they choose a site that was, that is within a mile, I don't think you'll, that the regulation would apply to, um, shut down the quarry, if you will. Because at the time it was approved, it met all the requirements. And obviously, the quarry operator in our example can't control where somebody puts a school or a house after the fact. So.
I can just hear the argument, well, you're telling me what I can't do within fifteen hundred.
Well, it may be then, right. And we're, and we're really back to being very careful about how you define this requirement. So it may be that you say, tying it back again to a moment in time, 'cause you can't control the future. So it may be, um, being clear that the requirements for the quarry to meet these various setbacks are for, at the, may goes, maybe it goes without saying, but you might put in there at the moment of application. Obviously, to the extent things control or change after the fact, the, the applicant in this example, the quarry operator, can't control those things.
And I, I'm sorry.
And the, on the one mile, that's not in there currently, is it? That's, that's part of the new draft language?
No, that's, that's current.
That is existing.
Yeah.
See, the existing one was, fine, is when this other quarry wanted to expand, is when it got in within that mile. 'Cause the school, being there, it was okay. Until they wanted to expand, well, the expansion, the extended part of the quarry in operation is what. Got it within that one mile.
Yeah, I think what, yeah, it was a brand-new school, you're talking about the one, yeah, I know which one you're talking about. And, yeah, I think, I think the mile's actually in the expansion area itself. It's not within the existing, where they are, as I recall. But I don't.
But it worked to change their.
It did.
It affected their expansion.
Yeah.
So it worked the way it was intended to work.
Right.
Was that it, the, the geographic area applied, and it prohibited something?
Yeah.
Doug, this map, this blue.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's owned by rock, the quarry.
Yeah, that, that's the actual quarry property, yes, sir. That, that's just to help you identify it.
So, if we use fifteen hundred feet from property line, okay?
Mm-hmm.
They can expand the quarry operation in that, in that blue area, right?
If you use fifteen hundred feet from property line?
Mm-hmm.
They could move it anywhere they wanted to.
They can move it in, yeah.
They can move to any corner they wanted to.
They can quarry.
Well.
If we use it fifteen hundred feet, go back to the, if we use fifteen hundred feet.
No, I don't, I don't think, if you're using fifteen hundred feet, then the measurements don't start at the quarry wall, where you're seeing like that one on the, the far right there, the twenty-five ninety-seven.
Mm-hmm.
If you're using the property, if you're doing the measurements from the property line, then you don't start measuring until you get to the end of the blue area. Yeah, right, and then.
If we use property line as our, as our fifteen hundred feet.
Oh, I see what you're, then you're saying, could they, yeah, I guess they.
They could expand that quarry as much as they want.
They could expand it, yes, yeah, I think they could, yeah.
If we use, if we use the quarry itself as our fifteen hun- hundred feet, they can expand unless.
Unless the, unless they meet the fifteen-foot requirement.
Unless they get approved.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you're measuring from, and I guess kinda what my thought process, when I was talking property line, was measuring to the property line or the structure of the school, hospital, whatever that is you're talking about, not necessarily from the property lines of the quarry. Yeah, 'cause if you're gonna, yeah, if you start measuring from the, if you say you have to be at least fifteen hundred feet from the property line of the quarry, then I think you do open it up quite a bit.
It, it, okay, we say fifteen hundred feet, uh, from the property lines.
Of the quarry or of the other structures?
Let's just say we say fifteen hundred feet from property lines. This is my quarry. This afternoon, I'm gonna have a surveyor out there.
Mm-hmm, right.
Fifteen feet from the quarry site. Somebody else is going on this big chunk of blue out here, I'm not going on it. That brings my fifteen hundred feet closer. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
My wife's going on it, or my son's going on it. If we don't, if, if, if we use, 'cause I don't want, this, this is, this is hard on me. Being fifteen hundred feet from right here, see? I'll move that line right to here, survey it, so. 'Cause what, now, the way it is now, if you do property line, we open it up the whole thing, right?
I think.
Well, it's only certain, certain parts of it, it'd just be on the right side, right? 'Cause some of these has got, what, a hundred and ninety-two feet? But it's only this side that can be expanded, right?
Well, under, uh, if, if we were to get another application in, then probably yes. Uh, now, I mean, that's just, that's just one measurement, uh, you know, from there all the way out to the, the nearest property. Uh, now, if we start, if we took some of those measurements going some other way, you know, like the one right below that's a thousand feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there's some above it that are within that, within a thousand feet. So I don't know how much of this really could, i- if this were a new application coming in for a new expansion, I don't know how much they really could use of that because of the surrounding zoning, I'm, which I'm assuming is pretty much all residential, but.
It's a little slippery.
Yeah, I mean, basically, with the, with, with the way it's currently worded, from the quarry wall and all that, instead of measuring out toward other property, you're really measuring from your property line in, is what you're doing. Uh, you know, to the quarry area, the quarry wall, everything. That, that's basically like a building setback at that point. Instead of like a forty-foot setback for a house, you're looking at a fifteen-hundred-foot setback for a quarry wall. That's, that's really what you're doing. That, that's how we currently have it written, so.
And that's currently what is on the book now.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And that's what has been approved, and that's what.
I- it's worded a little differently in the zoning resolution that we're currently under, but e- essentially, that's what it says, yes, sir.
That's what, Doug, repeat that again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just read it. The way it's currently worded in our zoning resolution, this is what we're currently under, it says, re- excuse me, "Resource production and extraction type operations shall not be located closer than one mile to any school site, shall be setback at least fifteen hundred feet excavation area, if applicable, from public rights-of-way, churches, and all residentially-zoned property, including residential portions of approved planned developments." That's how it's currently worded. What we're proposing, at least at, currently, at this point, what's in the, the draft, is no excavation quarry wall or storage area shall be located within one mile from a school or fifteen hundred feet from streets, community assemblies, or residentially-zoned property. That's essentially what we've got written for a draft.
That's not property line. That's not property line.
I'm sorry.
That's not property line.
No.
Read it again.
Which one, the draft or what's current?
Quarry activity and storage area.
Okay. No excavi- no excavation quarry wall or storage area shall be located within one mile from a school or fifteen hundred feet from streets, community assemblies, or residentially-zoned property.
Okay, so it's not property line?
Doesn't say property, that doesn't say one way or the other. It, it. I mean, as far as from the quarry itself, it's talking the quarry walls or storage areas. But when you're talking about the residentially-zoned property, community assemblies, schools, what have you, it does not specify property line, it does not specify building. So we would have to determine how we wanna do that. At this point, it is, yes. I mean, I think it's something we could nail down pretty easily, just make a decision one way or the other, but it's, I think it's something that we need to do.
I guess one thing, Doug, is enforcement.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in order to enforce this, we'd have to have a codes officer be able to go onsite onto the quarry and look and see what, whatever their current activity is. Let's say you get a complaint, is my point. Are we gonna do that? I, I don't know. Do we wanna do that?
I think we.
I don't know. So that's what I'm thinking about, is whenever you have a rule, you have to be able to enforce the rule. And so, I, I'm just trying to figure out enforcement.
I mean, uh, David's not in here. The enforcement of the rock quarries are normally done by the state. And his inspectors normally, I don't think, go on-site to these, the state does most of the inspection and enforcement on these rock quarries.
So are we gonna enforce it?
Well, I mean, I think we can enforce, right, and, um, I've sent Ms. Johnson a message, she can't, uh, see if David's available, if David Jones is available, come up here to help answer that question. I mean, if it's in our zoning resolution, or ordinance, or whatever we end up calling it, which should be called an ordinance, I do think that, from an enforcement standpoint, we would have the responsibility to, if we got a complaint, to enforce that. Now, I mean, I think that raises a larger question, you know, if you go out there to make a measurement and they say, well, we're not gonna let you run our property, then what happens? But that's, again, hopefully, Mr. Jones will be able to, to provide some insight into that. Of course, if they're not hiding anything, I don't see why they care if we were on-site, but, yeah. Here's Mr. Jones right here. There's some questions about enforcement of the, we're talking about rock quarry enforcement and those kinda things, uh, just in general, but, and I'll let, uh.
Here's the discussion, we're, we're trying to figure out, how do we put any sort of parameters on a rock quarry and their activity, and then protect their surrounding property owners? And so, we're trying to figure out, do we, um, do we take off language from, like, basically their quarrying activity, you know, what a quarry wall is, that sort of thing, versus do we go off the property line? Um, and so then my question to Doug was, when you have a rule, the rule's only as good as your ability to enforce it. So let's say we have quarry activity, and it, and the rule is that it can't be within fifteen hundred feet of, um, a residence or a structure. And then you've got a property owner who complains and says, no, they're closer than that. Now what happens? The, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is it easier for us to enforce off the property line? Or is it easier for us to enforce off of quarrying activity, which is a moving target, 'cause they're gonna move all within their property bounds?
I, I agree with you. I, I think the, um, activity would be hard to determine the distance other than maybe a property line. So if it was designated as a property line, it's something that we could actually go out and measure, because, uh, activity could even be piling gravel, or piling, or trucks running down, um, a excess road or something like that. So you start measuring those distances. Um, and they can change daily, sometimes on the quarrying operations. So, I do feel like the property line may be the determining point that we could hang our hat on, you know, with a, a measurement.
So how do you handle complaints right now for quarrying activity? I'm sure you get them.
Um.
'Cause Dale said he's not.
Most of the complaints that we get are not covered by us, they're covered by the state, air quality, or water control.
Okay.
Uh, groundwater, but, uh, but if we do get a complaint, um, our zoning enforcement officers go out and determine from our regulations that if there is a violation.
So what would fall in your jurisdiction, then?
Any of the zoning regulations.
So basically, the blasting, the activity.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, any, any of the zoning regulations that's in place, that's in our, uh, bu- but, uh, the blasting is controlled by the state, uh, groundwater, and, um, air quality control is all by the state.
Now, I'll, I'll throw this in there too, just for discussion. Uh, now, we're, you know, a lot of what we're talking about is dealing with new quarries, of course, new quarries coming in, because, of course, the existing quarries will be grandfathered. Uh, you know, assuming a new quarry came in, depending, but regardless of the regulations, if we kept the fifteen-hundred-foot setback from the quarry walls and everything like we, like we're proposing at this point, what we would envision would be a site plan would have to come in, which would have to delineate where on their site they can do their quarrying work. You know, if there was a, you know, that, I mean, I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, it moves around daily, and I know that, that's true, depending, as long as they're within that envelope that they're allowed to have, though, I would make the argument that they're fine. It's, if they start blasting over, you know, another fifty, a hundred feet further than what they were supposed to. So, I mean, there should still be some sort of a controlling document at that point that would say, we can blast in this area, we can't blast over here. So, I mean, I'd just throw that out there for discussion more than anything, so.
And, and that can be controlled through site plan. Um, active areas or, or designated areas, yeah.
And to protect, my thoughts, to protect the property owners, I think we need to have it from property line, not structure.
You're talking the, not the quarry, but the other side, you're talking property line, okay.
Yeah, you know, in other words, I'm, I'm just thinking of my property line, at my house.
Right, the school property line.
My house, I want you to measure from my property, because, you know, I might wanna do something, I might have some, you know, plans.
Yeah, and I, right, sure.
On my property. They come in, that kinda would slow my process down too, so. I, I just think it's clear-cut, you know, go from the property line, and that makes it pretty easy.
So if we decide to do property line, what are the criterias for them to blast? Like, they can blast, how many feet from that property line can they blast?
The way.
Or do they have to be within that wall?
Well, the way that we've currently worded it, uh, well, assuming we keep a fifteen-hundred-foot, okay? You would have to be fifteen-hundred feet from any residentially-zoned property, or, now, depending on what we do with the school, I'm just gonna, for the sake of argument, assume, uh, at this point, just assume we're gonna lump schools in with everything, everything's fifteen-hundred feet. You would have to be, the blasting area would have to be at least fifteen-hundred feet from any property line that was zoned residential, any property line that had a school, a church, a hospital, whatever you choose to be in there, et cetera, et cetera. They would have to be fifteen-hundred foot from any of those structures, now.
They could go anywhere on their property, no, as long as it's fifteen-hundred.
As long as they met that, that's correct. Now, if there's commercially-zoned property or industrially-zoned property, the way we've currently worded it, it would just be regular industrial or commercial setbacks. Now, a- again, you might be more comfortable if we had that two-hundred-foot, um, ca- um, provision in there, like we saw on, on several of the, of the other communities we looked at. You know, even industrial and commercial property, they weren't necessarily fifteen-hundred foot, but they were, um, they were far, they were farther away than what we currently have. So, there'd be some, depending on the zoning of the property surrounding it, there may be a little bit of, a little bit of change because of that. But, uh, but generally speaking, if they were fifteen-hundred foot from, then that would be really what controlled fifteen-hundred foot from any of the residentially-zoned property or property lines of those different type of uses. Then they could, there'd be like a, basically, uh, they, they, on their site plan, they'd have a little area, so this is the area we can blast in, and that's where they would have to stay within.
The one point that I remember us talking about that, that really stuck with me was, we were, we were fearful that if we made the setbacks too extreme, then you were gonna run into the issue where you might have multiple small quarries, or, or shorten the lifespan of a quarry. And, and I think we kinda felt like as a group, that wasn't a good idea either. We'd rather, if you're gonna have a quarry, you'd rather have fewer of them, have, let it have longer longevity. So, how does, how does this fifteen-hundred feet factor into that, to the lifespan of a quarry? Do we know, Dale, or do you better run into that?
If you had a, a parcel that was two-hundred acres, and you had fifteen-hundred-foot setbacks which reduced it, that controls the life of that rock quarry. If it's a four-hundred acre, and you got the fifteen-hundred foot, you've, you're gonna have a quite, a much longer life of the rock. And that's assuming that each site has the same amount of rock on it. So, that you can't really determine how long the life of that quarry is un- unless you know what size your parcels. And even then, it's difficult, because if you look at a lot of parcels, very few of them are just squares or rectangles where you could actually do a direct measure.
And that was one of the first maps you started with.
Right, and.
Right.
Yeah, and if you recall, yeah, when we handed out that report, and our current regulation's fifteen-hundred foot, you know, if you took that example tract we used, you know, you're looking at basically, uh, six-hundred-and-twenty acres having about fifty-eight acres that could actually be quarried. Uh, if you changed that to a thousand feet, you know, that gave you about two-hundred acres, uh, based on what we were, what we were looking at. So, I, I mean, it does play into that. And again, it's, it's hard to say that every tract, you can't really treat each tract the same, because it's, the circumstances are different around them, as Mr. Corbett said.
Yeah, they're not square.
Exactly.
Everyone's gonna have a different shape too.
Right, again, these are.
How many acres in the, before you, do you know how many acres are in the Hoover quarry here that we're looking at?
Off the top, yeah, off the top of my head.
I, I was just curious, just, I was trying to get a visual on what this would do to that.
I think it's larger than the one on Burton Ob. And the one on Burton Ob, I think it's about a hundred and fifty or something like that, but, uh, exactly the amount, I'm not sure.
You look at these examples, they're all using the setbacks, which doesn't change the property line at all. If you use your distance of a mile, say from the property line, and you also have a fifteen-hundred-foot setback, then your school is actually a mile plus fifteen-hundred feet from.
That's about what we got now.
From whatever that area is.
Fifteen-hundred-foot quarry.
So, you know, I got a call from a, a gentleman who bought some acreage out at Last Cassis. He was from a different part of the country. Anyway, he came, he called me one day and wanted to know if we had earthquakes. He said every day at five o'clock, my, my house shakes. And so his property, I think, was eighty or about a hundred acres. I looked up on GPS, and that's because he bought a piece of property that buddied a rock quarry on the back. Now, he lived in the front of that eighty acres, and he really never had been toward back. It was all trees and gullies and sinkholes and stuff, he just wanted different. My, my point is, as we talked about, as Steve mentioned blasting earlier, if you're on the same piece of rock that they're blasting, and it could be, you know, almost a mile. and it could be, you know, almost a mile away, you're going to shake everything. If there's a discontinuity in there, you could be within two hundred feet, and you may not feel it, so.
A whole lot of that has, there's a lot of difference in rock in this county, it's not all the same.
Yeah, you've got some soft rock, and you've got some harder dirt out there.
Really gets hard, and it could, it could vibrate a long way. Or, or there might be the soft rock, I don't know which, but I know there's a difference in it, so.
We've not had a new rock quarry in the county in how many years? It's thirty years, more?
Yeah, I think the most recent one is one on Burtonob, that I'm aware of, anyway.
One out of eight forty in Jefferson Pike. It could be the most recent.
So how does, what we're talking about affect the existing quarries?
What we're talking about will not affect the existing quarries. Now, it may affect any future expansions they want to do, but it's not going to affect how they currently operate, no sir.
So if, if the regulations that are put into effect are more stringent than what's now, it's not going to affect those quarry operations as they exist?
No, sir, that's correct.
Well, I'm not really interested in pulling schools out of there and grouping it with everything else. I, I just don't think that's going to fly with the county commission. And most of all, I just don't think it's going to go with the people. That was put in there for a purpose, I believe. And, and first of all, I, I just don't think our school board's going to look at spending thirty to fifty million dollars on a school building within fifteen hundred feet of a, of a rock quarry to begin with. But, I, I just think we don't, I just really don't want to mess with that.
Steve and I had this discussion a minute ago, how do you define school? Is that defined as a preschool, or is it defined in there?
Well, in our, in the new draft, the new ordinance, it is defined. The community education is defined as, it says includes the activities of an educational nature typically performed by public and private schools, does not include special training and schooling services offered by private individuals or for-profit institution, institutions, excuse me, nor technical schools, colleges, or universities. Examples include, but are not limited to, public, private nursery schools, kindergarten, primary, and secondary public and private schools. So it's, when we use that term, community education, if, you know, if we change that like we think we should, we're using the definition that's in the ordinance, so that there's no confusion there.
Same for me, Pettis, I am willing to lump the schools in with everybody else, because my thinking is, if I'm a property owner, I'm going to look at the county, and I'm going to say, you went to extra extremes to protect your property, but you weren't willing to go to extra extremes to protect mine. So, that's how I would see it, so.
That's what I was talking about.
Well, I'm not necessarily looking at the property when I say the schools, I'm, I'm looking at the, the children. And that's, that's what I'm looking at there.
Kids, it's the same thing, you protected your kids, you didn't protect my kids.
But, that's the way I'm seeing it, is a group of children, all in, in one confined area, and that's what I was seeing there.
But it'll be the same children that live in those same neighborhoods, more than likely, so.
The more we talk about this, the less I know what I want to do.
Well, at some point, we're going to regulate any future quarry, if we make it too stringent. And that's, I think that needs to be considered, I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing. But I, if you make it too stringent, at some point, you, you, there will be no more quarries, because there won't be a land mass big enough to put one on. Well, that's, that's not what, yeah, we're wanting to do, we're not, I mean, we're not wanting to zone a business out, or rock quarry out, or anything. We're just, you know, trying to move along with, with, with our growth and looking over the safety and welfare of our community, as always, on planning commission, so. I'm fine where we are on fifteen hundred feet.
Our, our, I don't know if that was our original one, but it was somewhere in there, that, I guess our latest standard, or whatever.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let me just throw this out there, and you tell me if you agree, or, I guess we can kind of take it, okay? So, as I hear the planning commission, and, you know, and we'll just kind of get a consensus here, then I guess we can have a motion, if it's an order at that point. This is what I'm hearing, if I'm wrong, please tell me. You're okay with the fifteen hundred foot, leaving the fifteen hundred foot for residentially zoned property? For the, let me see here, for going, putting, going ahead and leaving community assembly activities there, which would be like lodges, churches, and those kind of things? Going ahead and moving community education, which would be your schools, into the fifteen hundred feet? And then again, the residentially zoned property, or residential portions of planned developments? All those would be fifteen hundred feet, they would be measured to the property line of those uses, or zoned property.
From the quarry wall?
From the quarry wall, right, the way we have it worded. The, there was some discussion about the storage area, about maybe, storage area of what? Storage area of rock, I guess, maybe? Of, of, what?
Anything.
Anything?
Because it moves. Any storage area will move.
Of rock you're talking about, though, or just storage, or rock or equipment, or anything like that?
I would say anything, anything you want to store there, you're going to, it's going to move.
Equipment, okay. And, I guess the two hundred feet from any other property line?
For storage?
For what, well, for any, basically for, for anything, yeah.
Any other, other zoned properties?
Other zoned property, like commercially zoned, industrially zoned, office, what have you, you know, two hundred feet.
What was the storage area?
Yeah, let's, let's hash that out a little bit, okay.
Well, let's go back, reread what it, how it's written.
Well, the way it's currently written, without, just what I was just talking about, without all that, would be no excavation, quarry wall, or storage area shall be located within one thousand, well, fifteen hundred feet of any community assembly activity, community education, et cetera, et cetera. So it doesn't really say storage area, it doesn't say what the storage area of what?
Doesn't say what we're storing.
Right, exactly.
Dale's saying it could, it could be trucks, and it could be gravel.
That's correct, and also depending on their business load or business plan, as David said, that moves from one place to another. And, you know, if you, let's say that your footprint for blast on this big one is, you know, is quite large. Well, your storage area for your, where you're blasting, may be closer to where you're blasting, just because of transportation costs that you're putting in. So you're going to move that, depending on what product you're selling. Or you would also probably move your, your vehicles and stuff, and stuff. So that's the challenge, as I see of doing, of including the storage areas like that, is because somebody, you know, we called David and say, you know, this storage area is within, he get out there, it may be, it's difficult for his group, gets back to enforcement that we were talking about earlier.
And I look at this map here, and, and if you look at the northern end of there, they've got a storage area that's kind of back in behind everything, you can't see it from the road. Is it really hurting anything, you know? And that appears to be equipment or trailers, or something like that, in that picture.
I mean, for clarity, I guess we could just take storage area out.
I, I don't know what you want to do, but.
Well, if we, if we strike, if we strike the storage area out, but.
How about, how about leaving storage area from public road?
Wouldn't there be a setback that applied anyway, for storage?
Probably not for storage, for buildings and things, probably not for storage, unless you specifically call it out.
If you had the same, if there's a building setback of two hundred feet, what if you had storage the same, if it's that same thing?
We could do that.
And, and that would just.
Buildings or storage areas, or something like, okay.
Making it a whole lot easier for the enforcement, got to go out there to determine.
Well, you know, and like I said, on enforcement, you know, David goes out there, and they've got a pile of rock out there. Okay, do you measure at the bottom pile of that rock, or, here you've got, you know, trucks and stuff going around there and moving? Is that where you measure from, or what, you know, we need something laid out where it's, it's really easy to understand. I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to get to, but, you know, I know why that was put in there, because you got, you know, you take somebody's residential home that's on the surrounding border, ever how far it is, or whatever, and then putting gravel there, piling it up, or whatever, the, the big graders and stuff that's out there, you know, the sound backing up, and the dust, and everything from them dumping shotrock, or gravel, or whatever there, and storing it, that's all coming on those folks, and you don't have that fifteen hundred foot separation.
Doug, what are the chances of us arranging, like a panel discussion with some of the existing rock quarry leadership? Because I know before, we've had work sessions, and we had questions about, we've had, you know, we've talked to hydrologists, we've talked to, we had developers come in one time, just to have an informal discussion, so, just to educate us more. Because I'm telling you, I, I don't know rock quarry from buying shoes. I mean, I'm telling you, I, I just don't feel equipped to, you know, I don't know about where the scales are, and where they move rock, and the blasting, and I, I just don't feel like I know enough information to make an intelligent decision about this. I feel like I'm, I'm gathering as much information as I can, and I'm making a best effort guess. But I'm just curious, I mean, do you think they would come in and be candid with us? Do you think that they would want to talk?
I mean, we could always ask.
We've been surprised before, we've had, you know, engineers come in, I mean, I just feel like I'd like to have a panel discussion with people who do this every day. I mean, just like with, you know, Mike Kush said, you know, he talked to several people, and again, the more he asked, the less he knew, you know? So, it's just so important, and I don't get it wrong.
I, I mean, if that's what you want us to do, we can certainly make a few phone calls, and see if they'd be willing to come in.
Everybody else's feedback, I mean, what do you think?
Can we do that if we're in litigation with one?
Can't talk about the litigation.
Well, I understand that, but.
It depends on what the discussion's going to be, I guess. I mean, there would be some, you know, you can't get into that, but just general information, I guess, about the way quarries operate is probably okay.
My concern, and, and I don't know how big a concern it is, but my concern is that if you start limiting everything to fifteen hundred feet, you're not going to be able to use any of the, of your property. You know, storage, if you have a setback of two hundred feet, as an example, and you can't store anything outside that two hundred feet, you're at least going to get more use out of that property. And that's what I was talking about a while ago, and, and I know that it'll look like a mountain and everything else, but, but at some point in time, you're going to have to say, okay, fifteen hundred feet on blasting, but you can use portions of that property for storage, if, if need be. And I, I don't know, I don't know if that's right or wrong.
And maybe we back that out, and put, you know, that's what we're, what we're talking about there. We could, we could possibly back that out, you know, in that storage area or something, and put another, you know, setback off there.
I just think we talk to the experts, because just like, well, you know, several of us served on, back when we revised the subdivision regulations, several of us were on that, you know, panel together. And we brought in, I mean, there was room full of developers here, you know, and they can't, because we didn't want to make changes that were going to, you know, hurt the economy, hurt them, but we were all set, you know, we needed to change some things, that we need to update our regulations. And so, we invited those experts to come in and talk to us, and give us their feedback, and I just feel like this is one of those times where it's, I just think it'd be a valuable discussion. Because here's the thing too, what we're, the changes we're talking about making, like you said, it's not going to affect what they have in place right now, it's only going to affect their future expansion, so I, I really don't feel like they have anything to lose to come in and talk to us, and be honest with us about, how should a future quarry operate?
If, if this doesn't change, let's say the existing quarry, I'm in Steve's district, I'm in the Blackman area, Burtonob, I believe it is, what, what, what can they do right now? Can they store right up to the property line? Or is there a setback that you have to, that they have to deal with, or what?
I don't. The existing regulation we have is vague in a sense, you know, it says resource production and extraction type operations. Does operations include the storage of material? Yeah, I mean, reasonable minds could, could differ on that. There's nothing that specifically calls out storage areas in our current regulations that have to be so many feet from a property line. So, a lot of it's up to, left up to interpretation, and, but I think you can look at what, you know, just with this one example that we did, that there are quite a few activities that go on on this property that are well within fifteen hundred feet of a property line, so.
I, I'm, I'm probably disagreeing with Rhonda a little bit about bringing experts in. We've been talking about this for months, and I, I don't know about you guys, but I'm growing weary about talking about it a little bit. And, and we're, we're not talking about something that we foresee in our future. However, we are talking about something that, that may affect someone at some point in the future. I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to move on, I'm wanting to make some type of, you started making a recommendation there, a minute ago, like fifteen hundred feet from the quarry operation itself, or the, the wall, if you want to call it, the blasting wall to a property line. And I'm willing to, to put the setback of two hundred feet, and no storage inside of that two hundred feet. And I know Steve said, where, where does that begin? And my guess is that where that first rock is, it's two hundred feet there. But, that's the type of thing that I want to see, and I want us to, and I want to vote on. You know, the quarry operations, we've had, we've had discussions with those, it was actually Rhonda back before your time, we've had folks in here, and we've had them at the county commission, and everything else, and I, you're going to get a lot different answers from the quarry operations than you are from residents. It's entirely two different things. And I, I'd just like to see us have some type of a recommendation, and we can vote on it and move on. We've been talking about this for months, and I don't want to delay it any longer. Can you put some type of a recommendation together, and then we'll take a look at that specifically? And if it's okay with you guys, let's do that. And our, our next meeting is a Monday night meeting on the ninth. And let's just take a, let's just put a recommendation together, and then we'll hopefully have someone move in second on that, and then we'll vote on it, or change it. But I'd like to see the fifteen hundred square feet, and.
Or fifteen hundred feet.
Linear feet.
I'm sorry.
I know, I know what you meant.
Fifteen hundred feet, still got a building mine, I guess, but fifteen hundred feet to the property line from the quarry operations, two hundred feet for storage, and then let's take, and include everyone in that fifteen hundred feet, including schools. And then if someone like Pettis wants to take that out, or make the, make the exception to that, we can move on that as well. In essence, amend the motion.
I have a question. If we, if we do this, and, and put in the fifteen hundred feet, and for the sake of argument, there is a thirty-two hundred and fifty feet wide straight shot, and is there anything that keeps that guy, and it's ideal, none, none of the neighbors object, and it's the best rock in the county, is there, is there, and we know that's not going to be the case, but I'm, this is for theory. Is, and the guy comes in, he says, well, I want to make it a thousand feet wide, which would reduce his buffer down, you know? Can he come in and get an exemption for that?
He wants to take the buffer down?
Yeah, less buffer, because it's such an ideal spot, and.
He would have to get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, but it is a possibility.
Yeah.
As long as it's possible.
These things that we do is a possibility, that they can go before the board and get, get a special use permit, or an.
Let's, let's even say, we'll leave the schools the way it is, a mile, and if someone wants to take that out, we'll do that.
Then we need to just leave it like it is, then, if we're going.
But what we have now is the property line, we don't have that, we don't have a buffer for storage, and, and that would be, in essence, ended up.
Well, and let me just throw this out there for just discussion purposes, if nothing else. If, if, if we really want to make a decision on this, if you can give us about ten, fifteen minutes, maybe like a quick recess, we can come up with some draft language, because we already have it here. It would just be a matter of going ahead, getting it in the form that you could read a little easier, rather than just saying, okay, we want this, we want that, we want this. We could actually give about ten minutes, come up with something, present it to you, and then you could even look at it today.
I really don't want you to take ten minutes, I mean, this is, this is an important deal, no matter what we say, it's important to our future, and to Rutherford County. Bring it back next meeting, my opinion, I don't want to do anything in ten minutes.
That's right, well, and I wasn't, I hope I wasn't trying to.
I know you didn't mean that in a bad way, really and truly, I didn't, Doug, I'm just saying, I, I just, take your time on this. Josh maybe can plug in some, some good verbiage there, and, y'all, I mean, it's, you know.
That's, we're more than happy to do it.
And, and I, I agree with, with Jeff and Stephen on that too. And I was just sitting right here looking at this map when we got here.
And, and I was just sitting right here looking at this map we got here. Uh, this quarry right here is pretty much doing what, what we're talking about. If you'll sit here and look at the distances that they're using for a lot of things they've got in that, it's, it's pretty much there. And, and I wanted to understand, I'm not against anybody's children, as far as this goes, because I, I see we've got somebody from the press back here, and I want that understood out there. But, uh, but, you know, if you can check into that, too, you know, reasons for, you know, that distance or whatever, what it was put in there for, and maybe, and in the meantime, too, between that meeting and there, I'll check into that myself as well, uh, to see if there's something out there nationwide, as far as there's reasons for that. You know, there may be a study that's been done in this area and whatever, that, that it affects, uh, education or things of that type, but, you know, whatever. But, but, yeah, I, I think we need to, you know, when we do this, do it right and whatever. But, but I was just sitting here looking at this, and a lot of the things we've discussed, this quarry seems to be following that pattern. I, I don't know.
About a mile, half mile south.
But let's just do that.
That's fine.
If that's okay with everybody, we'll look at the fifteen hundred to the property line, we'll look at the two hundred setback for storage, and we'll look at, uh, including, uh, one mile for schools. And if anyone wants to make that motion, that, with that recommendation at the next meeting, and wants to amend that motion, we can do that, such as eliminating the schools or something like that. That'll give us the opportunity to, to look at it. Our next meeting is, um, um, Monday, the ninth, I believe it is.
That's correct.
At six P M. Uh, and then, uh, if you would, send that recommended motion, uh, out to everyone, and let us take a look at it.
Yes.
Okay?
Chairman Phillips, are you clarifying what the storage is for, right? Did you, did you tell him to clarify that within what you're talking about?
I, I think there's, we're, we're talking about a two hundred foot setback, and then you could do most anything in that two hundred foot setback, except blast.
Okay, but I thought we had.
It's equipment, it's storage of rock, it's whatever.
I think the big issue would be able to utilize that.
Right.
That property for some reason, if you had it fifteen hundred foot.
You couldn't do anything.
Couldn't do anything.
Okay.
You know, you could, you could build an office, you could store equipment, you could actually store some rock. Uh, we can have some, a further discussion on that if, if need be, but, uh, those are the type of things that I think we also don't need to just totally ignore someone's piece of property and let them get at least, uh, as much use out of it as they possibly can. So, let's just look at those things, and then we'll come back and open up that discussion again, okay? Mike?
Does, did we, did we talk about, or do we need to include a, a distance from public right away, from a road?
I think that was, it was within the two hundred foot. Yeah, that was part of the two hundred feet, right.
As long as you, if you reduce that other down to two hundred feet, I think you've got it covered.
No, 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 well, I'll just.
At least that was what we were thinking, is put that into two hundred, yeah.
And, and all of these things will be something to rest to take a look at and vote on here. If we wanted to change that setback to something, and someone wanted to do that, we'll have the opportunity to do that, okay? This is not something that we're going to vote on without the opportunity to make some change to it, okay?
And we're also putting in there, I mean, this, I think everybody was okay with this, but I'll just throw it out, just make sure we're, we're all on the same page, that for the land use activity table, where it says what uses are allowed and what zones, we were going to add quarries as special exceptions to the A R zone, as well as keeping it in the heavy industrial zone, A R being the agricultural residential zone. You recall, we talked about that, about make, making that addition. That way, somebody wanted a quarry, rather than asking for heavy industrial, maybe getting the zoning, but not getting the quarry special exception, then they would be left with heavy industrial property. Give them the option to be able to go for the agricultural residential, that way the list of uses is reduced if they don't get the quarry use. But I think everybody seemed okay with that, so I just throw it out there as, make sure.
Also need to realize that what was appropriate thirty years ago is probably not even close to being appropriate right now. And what's appropriate right now, twenty years from now, will probably be very obsolete, too. So, we, we just need to take a look at, like, what we think would be best for the county right now, and at least for the immediate future, and kind of go on with that. It's a, it's a tough, tough situation, and, and rock quarries, if there's one proposed next month, is going to draw a tremendous amount of opposition, okay? And what we need is a tool, uh, to be able to listen to that public. And we also need a tool to be able to say, is this, uh, an appropriate piece of, piece of property for that, so.
I have a question, Doug. Have we, when was the regula- when were the regulations changed to fifteen hundred feet, and have we had a quarry come in since then?
I think the regulations, as are currently in the books, date back to.
Fifteen hundred feet, correct?
Right, date back to nineteen eighty-four. Now, have we seen one since then? I, I can at least say since I've been here, we haven't, now, in between the two, I don't think we've.
There was some rock extraction stuff, but it's not a, a, a quarry.
Right, we've seen, right, we've seen some burl pits and things like that, but, yeah, right.
The new proposal, send it out to everyone as soon as you get it. Let us take a look at it. We'll be ready to, more ready to move on it at, on the ninth. Um, let me just kind of throw something else out. Um, we're kind of right, winding this thing up. We've had public hearing after public hearing after public hearing, and we've moved, uh, this thing back for months and months and months and months, and it's been a really good thing. It's, it's helped us all. Uh, and we've listened to a lot of people, and we've compromised, and, and, um, just kind of throw this out. If we can get the rock quarry, uh, behind us, um, somewhere, our, our next Monday night meeting after the nineteenth will be, uh, on Monday, August the thirteenth. If we can pass the rock quarry thing, put a public hearing on the agenda for the thirteenth, uh, and once again, allow, allow folks to, to, uh, give us their input, with the hopes of, um, of being able to, to do something, either pass the new ordinance, or be prepared to pass the new ordinance sometime in August. Uh, county commission is going to be really busy in, in August, starting, uh, a new year. Um, but maybe with a goal of, in September, having a meeting with the county commission, uh, to, uh, to educate them on what the ordinance is, uh, and, uh, and allowing them the opportunity to sit their own timetable as to when they want to vote on it as well. But if we could, uh, schedule a public hearing, and that hinges upon us getting everything behind us, a public hearing on the thirteenth of August, uh, and then, uh, us reacting to, uh, uh, the whole new zoning ordinance sometime in August, and then, uh, and then begin our education process with the county commission in September. Just a, 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 a timetable that won't, won't be written, written in stone. Is that okay? Does that sound reasonable?
Good, it sounded good.
Okay.
And when we get the, when we get these other, well, the, with the, I guess, the biggest issue we're really dealing with now is the rock quarry, when we get that settled, we'll print new drafts out for everybody. Because I know the ones we were working off of now are, are, you know, we, there's been several changes, little tweaks here and there, so make sure we'll have the latest and greatest version.
Would we, would we make a motion to send it up to the, would we vote on it in August then, or after we, after we have a public hearing and that the full commission's educated? Which, which needs to come first?
We, we could vote and, and either pass or not pass the, the new recommended ordinance, and then we wouldn't have to send it to the county commission, and it with any particular timeframe. I think the county commission themselves would, uh, would want to take a look at, at what's in it, what we've gone through. They really want to take a look, I believe, as a county commissioner, at the highlights, as to what has come about as a result of all of the public hearings that we've had, and the adjustments that we've made, um, in essence, compromises that we've made. Uh, I think as a county commissioner, that's what I would want to see, and I think that's probably what will happen, Mike. So, it, September may even be too soon for them, uh, and if it is, they still have an approved draft, uh, or an approved resolution by this commission, and, uh, they can take their time. If, if they don't, they don't want to have a, a, a work session, if you please, in September, they'd rather have it in October, we'll just leave it up to them.
Right.
And not push them, and, uh, let them absorb it, have all the questions that they have, uh, kind of out in the open. They'll probably even, of course, before they, uh, can vote on it, will have to have a public hearing themselves. So, we'll leave that timeframe to them. I don't think there's anything magical, is it, Josh, uh, for it to go before the county commission, after it passes this commission?
You mean in terms of the timeline?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, thank you. So, so, we'll, we'll just kind of play a bear. If we can pass it in, in August, if we can pass this resolution in August, and, uh, that, from that point on, it'll just be working with the county commission.
Doug, are the subdivision regulation rewrites, are those ongoing, or are those on hold until we get?
Well, we've been kind of, put them on a hold. We do have a draft of that that we're still kind of working through.
All right.
Uh, now, obviously, we've, what we've kind of envisioned is not presenting that to you until you've moved the zoning on, because I think that'd be getting a little too much on your plates.
So, the longer we wait on this, also, the longer it's going to take for the subdivision regulations to come in.
Yes, it, it would. Now, if you want the draft and things to look at, I mean, we can certainly, you know, work through what we need to work through, and then get you the drafts, if you want to see them before that. But, you know, our recommendation would be, let's get the zoning taken care of, at least, at least get it moved on to the next level, and then we can start looking at the subdivision regulation, because that's a document that starts and ends with your body. Uh, you know, that doesn't have to go forward to the board of commissioners, that can be approved here.
Doug, you might mention, the best way for the public, if they're watching, to view the new, when you get the new draft printed, how they can get a hold of that.
Yes, I mean, there's several. We have it on our website. Uh, we have the current draft that we're working under right now, as well as the, the draft map that we've been looking at. Uh, of course, if anybody wants to come up to our office, you know, feel free to call our office. It's, uh, area code, well, I guess I'm going to tell you that, but it's eight nine eight seven seven three oh is our office number. Uh, feel free to, to give us a call. We're more than happy to talk with, with anybody about it. Uh, come up to our office, we're at One South Public Square, right next to Big B Cleaners, room two hundred, second floor. Come by our office, we can make a draft available to, for someone to take a look at, and to, a map as well, to, to look at as well. Uh, we're, we're here for questions, comments, if someone wants to come in and just chat with us about it, more than happy to do that.
August date, there's nothing magical about that, but the county commission will be really busy in August. Uh, we won't be any more busy than normal, um, so, um, it'll be a good time for us to, uh, really work on it, try to nail this thing down. Okay? It's, it's been a, it's been a, another productive meeting. Uh, this is a, a situation that is, um, is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts. Uh, and, and it, it's good to not rush through it. Uh, but we have spent literally months, uh, on this particular, uh, topic, and, uh, let's see if we can come up with a recommendation. And even if it's not just right, we can adjust it, uh, at our next meeting, which is Monday, July ninth. Anything else?
I have nothing further.
Good job, you guys. Thank you. We're joined.
Very good.
Thank you.